We're unmuted. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I have a motion to approve the tentative agenda.
I'm so moved.
There's a second? One second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Betty, you read the minutes from our last meeting, please.
February five, twenty twenty four. Chairman Helgobald called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine a.m. Members present were Rasmussen and Helgobald with Cluse absent. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgobald to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and special meeting of January thirty first, twenty twenty four, were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. An open forum, Bob Ritter stated that the ACLU joined the fight against Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline Project. There also, there is an attorney that is working pro bono for landowners against the pipeline. Bob asked if the Board of Supervisors would be interested in speaking to her. He would line up the, um, line up a time. Also in open forum, Sandy McGrath presented a Health and Human Services snapshot of the demographics of Wright County. The snapshot stated that Wright County is a shortage area for primary care physicians and mental health care providers. With addictive disorders, twenty-two point two percent of adults reported binge drinking, with twenty-four point seven being the Iowa average. In Wright County, sixty-nine residents received substance abuse treatment in twenty twenty-three. Thirteen point one percent residents live below the rate of poverty, with eleven percent being the Iowa average. Five thousand six hundred and eighty are enrolled in Medicaid. Eight percent households do not have a vehicle, with five point six percent being the Iowa average. The Public Health Department will have the full report available. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgobald to receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff, motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgobald to approve the liquor license for nine and dime pending dram, motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgobald to approve the liquor license for Oakdale Chapter of the Isaac Walton League, motion carries. Motion by Helgobald, second by Rasmussen to appoint Clark Morgan to be the Troy Township Trustee with a term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, motion carries. Adam Clemmons, Wright County Engineer, presented Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight for the establishment of a five-ton embargo. There was then a motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgobald to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight for the establishment of a five-ton embargo. Uh, embargo by Roquel Boat, ayes, Helgobald and Rasmussen, nays, none, with Cluse absent. Motion carries Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight duly passes and reads as follows, and then you can see the full resolution. Clemmons then updated the board that the crews have been hauling sand in from Wright County materials to refill sand and salt storage piles. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgobald to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additional corrections? There will be. Claims have been around? Open forum for the public, anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom wish to address the board? Okay, item. Six is a time and event, Adam, you want to go into your secondary roles?
Sure. So Blades, last week, we're out, uh, sundry, but Tuesday to Friday, uh, out working Intersections Railroads, urgent approaches, uh, isolated corrugation. So, um, we had, uh, good weather enough for them to go out and start blading up some of those areas, not doing full miles just yet. But, um, trying to get to the spots where they can put their pick down and, uh, get some of those rough areas out. Um, also began picking up brush piles, uh, trucks, uh, sundry. Um, they also are going to start helping with brush piles, and that was late Friday afternoon, so started doing that. Um, we did five work orders, a service work order, uh, something for the sheriff's office, two work orders for the sheriff's office and a repair, and you can see those. I wanted to make one note, we, we do include the cost on those, so you can see what it takes to do our repairs and it's a large repair versus just a, you know, something easy. They did have to do quite a bit of work on the, uh, trail, the old gold trailer last week, they were grinding on it for a couple hours. Okay, for future reference.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. Oh, I had called you concerning, uh, a phone call or a text that I received from a resident up in, uh, north of Belmont, uh, on.
Oh, or, yes, there, there was some.
I never know for sure how to respond, I mean, I know that we're not in the ditch pickup, but I also recognize that we run equipment when we're going and stuff and.
And so. There was a TV, like a very, very old TV, um, and I think we'll have to see what the other, the other side was like. Um, looked to me like it was deer guts.
Okay.
Somebody had cleaned a deer and threw it over the side, so.
Um, I was thinking that the picture I saw had a tire and, uh.
I don't remember seeing a tire, but a lot of guys.
Hopefully what I had received.
Yeah, that'll work.
Thanks. Yep.
Any, uh, old business, new business or meetings?
Unfortunately, we had our statewide supervisors meeting last week. Actually met with, uh, that included a lunch, uh, and we ate lunch with, we didn't eat lunch with him, but we've met with him after lunch. Um, both Mark Thompson and Dennis Guth were there, uh, and then we had a panel of two senators and two representatives. Neither one of them from, from our area that, uh, answered questions and talked about legislation that is, uh, currently going through the legislative process, um.
Getting ready for the first funnel?
Yes, get ready, the end of this week, I think is the first funnel, it's, uh, bill has to be out of, uh, committee for it to go on from there. If it's not out of committee, it dies. Uh, met with, uh, Tim Whipple while we were down there, uh, over lunch. Um, just to get an update on where we are with the Summit Carbon Solutions, uh, trial and, uh, his estimated timeline, he felt that we wouldn't hear anything probably from the I U B until the April timeframe, so, uh, we're just kind of in hold till then.
Did you guys met with Farm Bureau?
Uh, then, then that evening, uh, myself and Rick and, uh, Adam and Betty met with, uh, the Farm Bureau and went over, um, the proposed, uh, budget.
I had no meetings last week, economic development tomorrow morning at seven.
And then we have our conference board meeting tonight at four o'clock, yeah.
We are close enough, item six, Regine Chapman Trails.
Yeah, we. We were able to successfully get the Clarion Greenway Connection into the city of Clarion's name in, at the end of September. So we're super excited about that, the route to get from Clarion to Lake Carnelia is now secure. So now we're in the fundraising, we sent these cards out last fall. Okay, um, and we are just trying to come up with different ways to fundraise and put service on that trail. Um, I've been in contact with supervisor Hylissou who has been visiting with our, um, with Adam about what is the most cost-effective, best way to get across the White Fox Creek on there. So we're still trying to narrow that down because it's a huge chunk of the cost of putting in that trail. So, um, other thing, we were also, this is kind of fun, we were the first county in the state of Iowa, the first organization ever to participate in Latino Conservation Week, which is a national thing that's going on for about twelve years now, done by the Hispanic Heritage Foundation. We did a Trails and Tacos event out there on the future Greenway Connection Trail, because part of it's clear and you can walk on it. Um, so that's, that's pretty exciting, first one in the state. Um, and then finally, we, Lisa Russell, who, um, really is passionate about helping out the trails and wanting to do and participating, but with her two businesses, she just couldn't make that work, so she stepped down, but we did find Teresa Sadler, who's willing to come on board, and we just need of course you guys to, if you're all right with that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we appreciate her volunteer and the toll to do that work. I'll give you just an update, uh, I had, uh, besides the meetings that I've had with Adam, I had a phone conversation with Dan Weidemeyer, um, after I had looked at, gone online and looked at the duck, design specifications for low water crossings. And my conversation with Dan, of course, is, uh, that crossing, the White Fox, is D fourteen's outlet. And, uh, and there is a reasonably large area that it drains, uh, to the north. And so the concern is, would that low water crossing, um, slow down the water, which causes sediment, uh, to settle? But, uh, that's why I wanted the name of, of your engineer, because I want to have a conversation with him and make sure that he's understanding what we're trying to cross here, so.
Do you want contact information for them?
If I could, please, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for doing all that effort for us, helping.
Too bad we don't have an old antique still.
Bridge.
Can you mount there, Adam?
Yeah.
There was one that you guys decommissioned and we had someone out there take a look at it and evaluate if we could use it, and it, the amount of work it needed, it just was not.
Yeah, it would have cost a ton to even do that, it would have been neat, but it cost.
Hey, thank you too.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would make, I would make a motion to appoint Teresa Sadler to the Wright County Trails Committee.
One second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, now fifteen, around schedule, members of Claremont Country Club to discuss parcel of land north of Lake Carnelia.
That's your name?
Yeah.
So the Claremont, uh, Country Club Board of Directors is seeking to resolve this issue of the property taxes that's been paid by Claremont Country Club, um, to Wright County for the partial of land, uh, zero four zero nine four five one zero zero two. Um, as you guys are aware, this is ongoing for at least the last ten years, um, from information that we've received. Uh, this issue started back in twenty fourteen, uh, when the Wright County Conservation Board made an inquiry to the state of Iowa, D N R, seeking clarification on ownership of that parcel, so, uh, documentation we've received from the state, uh, D N R and from Wright County Conservation. They claim this parcel is sovereign lake bed and belongs to the state. So, um, even though we have an abstract showing this parcel, um, it's over three acres, belongs to Claremont Country Club. Uh, Wright County continued to accept property tax payments from Claremont Country Club for this parcel. Um, even though the state of Iowa and Wright County officials were claiming we had no ownership in this parcel. Uh, Claremont Country Club never received any type of notice from the state of Iowa or officials from Wright County showing ownership of this parcel. Was turned over to the state of Iowa, um, any record of Claremont Country Club owning this parcel disappeared from official records. Uh, without our own due diligence, Wright County would still be accepting property tax payments for this parcel from Claremont. Um, to seek resolution is better, we are seeking, uh, asking the county to refund, uh, Claremont Country Club, uh, twelve thousand dollars from Wright County for past taxes and interest that we've paid over the years. I can give you guys a copy of this one.
Okay, absolutely.
My understanding is, and I would have to check with the treasurer again or look at Iowa code, and I don't remember what code section it was, but, uh, we are not allowed to refund, uh, property tax. I want to say that there's a limit of two years, I believe, yeah, um, when we looked at this, uh, prior. And, uh, as far as documentation from the state or the county to the country club concerning, uh, sovereign lake bed, the state has always considered that their property. I mean, I don't know who did the abstract or when the abstracting was done. But I do know that the state of Iowa's position is, is that, uh, you can go back in Iowa code. I, I don't know about to the beginning of the state, but, uh, they recognize in Iowa code the sovereign lakes, um, from when the state was organized, so. Uh, Iowa D N R, I know that you're online, do you have any input?
Can you hear me now?
You have.
Yep, uh, yeah, you're correct, uh, basically, um, during the initial survey of the state, um, when Iowa was becoming a state, any areas that were found to be uninhabitable, lakes, meandered rivers, um, they were not part of that survey, and those areas were, uh, given to the state as part of our entrance into the, um, into the union, and so it has been our opinion, um, it is our opinion that those areas are under the jurisdiction of the state of Iowa, um, and remain that way to this day. And there is a list, as you pointed out, um, in code, uh, that lists what those lakes are, um, and we rely on those surveys from the eighteen hundreds, um, to kind of set the boundaries of where those meanders, rivers and the lakes of Iowa are set.
Oh, and your ab, when you did your abstract, I mean, when was it last, when was it updated, at what point was, because obviously there was an error in the abstract.
I think the original abstract we have was what, nineteen forty?
Has it been, has it, has it been updated anytime?
When they redid the road?
Yeah. And it had never been updated since?
No.
And then you guys, you were, you notified it in two thousand fourteen?
We had another issue.
With the Schroeder thought.
Right, no, no. Prior to that, there's a lot south of the access or the, the road on the North Shore that they wanted to build a house, and they were claiming that a little triangular piece was their property, because their deed listed it as such or something. And that's what spurred the survey at that time of that lot and went out the road with it and stuff like that. And then they also surveyed at that time around the lake edge.
Okay. And well, and I, I, I think the statute is two years, I believe, because we, I think we talked about this, but in the last time you were.
We did, when Mr. Baldwin was here.
That's right.
What's the value of that three acre lot parcel, do you know what the value, valuation is?
So for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, the value we had is fifty-two hundred. Um, so for twenty twenty-one, we'll be got a total estimate of taxes of one hundred and twenty-seven and dollars and sixty-five cents. For twenty twenty-two, using the twenty twenty-two value, the twenty-two rollback and levy, we come up with an estimate of eighty-one oh three. And then the twenty twenty-three year, which wouldn't be payable until fall, um, the property has a value of eighty-eight hundred.
And you're not getting bills now, those have stopped, correct?
Um, I don't know about bills, but since we changed it, it was in between this, last year and this year, so I won't send out my assessment notice until April, and then yes, they would not get an assessment notice from me.
You have, how you calculated the twelve thousand dollars?
Figured back, you know, we'll go back to, back in, whenever it's all forties, you know, that we've been paying taxes on it, so.
Had, had you ever looked into like Forest Reserve or the SLU bill to have it tax exempt?
Or not taxing that.
But the.
Property can be put into the SLU bill.
If, if it's Forest Reserve or the SLU bill, then it would be, because it's not habitable and just not farmable, it could be considered tax exempt.
I don't see how we can go back that many years, I think this, and I'm not sure, I'll have to check with Eric on that, on a, is it a two-year period?
Well, my understanding is the disputed area for the last two taxing years will total two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Right.
Um, but again, I would want to review Iowa code before we, uh, make a decision on, yes, we will refund or if we even can.
Yeah, are able to.
Yes, but, but if we were going to, uh, it would be that portion of land, um, that, that is in dispute or that has been in dispute, um, and back as far as, uh, we are possible. To my knowledge, they don't use or have not used that property or that side of the property, so.
That's correct.
Yes.
Um, if Iowa code four forty-five point six zero, let me watch where you went.
Four forty-five point what?
Six zero.
Six zero, okay, thank you.
I don't think we gave you an answer today, but I would, you know, I think we need to get with Eric and get his opinion on that, just to find out what our, what latitude we have.
Yeah. Good. But again, uh, if that is permissible, I think it will be substantially less than, uh, than your letter, uh, asked for, or seeking.
Still, and I understand by Iowa code what you're saying, but, you know, even if you back in twenty fourteen, you know, and the survey was done or, and everything was done, why wasn't anything changed, why have we still been paying property taxes on that since twenty fourteen?
Yeah. That's my question. Yeah, and I don't think, and I'm not trying to be smart about this, uh, if it sounds like I am, I'm not, um, but I don't think it's the county's responsibility if there's an issue with, um, surveys, property lines, um, I think that that is the, the land owner's responsibility, I believe. And again, I'm not trying to be.
That, I, I remember as that being said, the burden of proof is on the owner, not the, not the county, I believe, but that, that goes back probably a year or so or two years ago, I think the last time we had this brought up, but I can, Eric refreshes on that.
My question is, if you guys knew about it in two thousand fourteen and we weren't notified, how are we going to know?
I think a letter was.
There's no knowledgeable or in our basis.
We were never notified.
To apply to that, to state that, you know, we don't think the taxes are coming, you know, but we should be paying those taxes.
I will look back, I will look back, but I think a letter was sent, if they're mind, it wasn't, okay.
In our correspondence, we received from the D N R, they have no record of any correspondence. There was a correspondence sent, I think, to the other one that Eric was talking about, there was a correspondence from the state sent to them, but.
That line.
Yep, they're not.
Give me any, add Eric, any? Did you?
I mean, no, I don't have any.
Okay.
Thanks. We'll say, we'll get something, we'll get something revolved, we'll talk to Eric and find out what we, what our latitude and what we can do.
Okay, so then, uh, who will get back with us then? Eric get back to us, will you get back to us or?
We will get, we'll get back to you, oh, we'll give Eric a call.
I, I will.
That's fine.
It works, yeah.
Thank you for your.
Thanks, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, item number eight is a nine forty-five will be in recess until about nine forty. Okay, we're back in session. You, item number eight, uh, review and act on drainage brush and weed control service contract, Courtney.
Okay, so I have compiled with, um, communication from other drainage administrators around our area, um, just to kind of see what they do in regards to their brush and weed control services. Um, we have not had previously a contract that we have done. Um, due to that, I feel that what we have been receiving from, um, our contractor over the years has been lacking, um, every year seems to be getting less and less and less, including notes that we might be getting on the actual invoices that we receive. Um, we have not gotten, since I've been here, a certificate of insurance from our contractor, meeting all of our guidelines that we require all of our other drainage contractors to provide us, and we have also not gotten any, uh, commercial pesticide applicator licenses, um, from our contractor. Uh, previously, is my understanding that when there has been an issue with any trees that have been noted, when they've been out to do brush and weed control, that contractor is to come in and fill out a separate work order on those trees. Um, and then that gets paid out separately, and, um, due to the fact that that is not part of the brush and weed control, it is a different tree issue. Um, that has not been done either, since I have been here, it is also been kind of lumped into the brush and weed control and more turned towards tree control. Um, so I have, with the assistance of the other surrounding, um, drainage administrators, I have compiled this two-year contract, which is the same two-year rotation that we've been doing. Um, you each have a copy of the contract that I have dropped it up in front of you. Um, on that contract, there have been just a couple of changes that were made in that first paragraph at the top, um, where it says Wright County, we did update that to say Drainage District Trustees, because those are, you know, trustees are the ones in charge of it, not the county, and then every place throughout this agreement, um, where it stated, as it was referred to as county, that was updated to say trustees, um, again, to reflect that, um, responsibility. And then the other change that was, um, done was under number two. Line A, the end of that that is highlighted, uh, within the county's drainage districts or ditches, since the work is only done within our ditches and we don't do any work above our tile lines to upkeep any of that, um, we will change that. If they, uh, county's drainage, county drainage ditches, we will remove the districts. Um, a couple of things that I do want to make sure that, um, I mentioned on here is within this, I did specify that trees are to be separate from the brush and weed control contract, so they would have to come in and fill out a work order, and that would get paid out separately, not part of the payment for the, uh, ditch itself that we are going to require them to provide us with their certificate of insurance. Um, the exhibit A that is mentioned will be the insurance requirements for contractors as we require for our drainage contractors that go out and do work on our tile lines and things. Um, we are going to require them to provide us with a commercial pesticide applicator license annually, so that we make sure that we have that and it is up to date for them. Um, other things that are included in here that we would like to see on their invoices when we get them back from the contractor is location information, so we want to know, um, what drainage district number that they did the work in, which we've previously gotten. Um, we would like to know what townships and sections that they did the work in, so if we have any concerns, we want to go out and do anything, we know exactly where the work was done. Um, also asking for beginning and ending GPS coordinates for the area that was worked. We've been asking for GPS coordinates for our work orders and things like that, but it's been very beneficial to be able to put into our mapping system. So this would be another, um, item that we could put in there, and if we need to add any notes.
Yeah.
And then, um, if they have any before and after pictures to show us, this is what it looked like beforehand, this is what it looks like after we've done the work, that would be beneficial as well. Um, page two, where it lists all the drainage districts, uh, the price per ditch and not to exceed challenge, that will get filled in after we get the bids from the contractor, we'll fill it in with their numbers, whoever gets awarded it, um. I noticed that I did not have the verbiage on here, so this might be some verbiage that you guys can let me know how you want to do it, but that first line after that table. Says in return for the contractor's performance and duties as outlined above, the contractor will be paid within thirty days of the trustees receiving the invoice from the contractor for monthly charges. I'm not sure how you might want to word it or how to, how you would want to put it in there. To state, you know, we're not going to exceed what the bid amount was, but it could be paid at lesser amount if. Their total charges aren't that full amount. So if they estimated thirty six hundred and it only cost them three thousand. They sent us three thousand, that's what we'll pay. So I think that verbiage should be added in there. That's not currently there.
So the price not to exceed, each, each one may, one or two maybe less, so.
Right, yeah.
Actual work.
Which we.
Invoice with actual work done, yes. So receiving the invoice for actual work done from the contractor.
And these came in a couple of times when it got to be a bigger, a bigger amount too.
Also attached here. Is a. Paper with a little box on it that shows what a proof of publication would look like. I would fill in the dates on that. I did make one change on that at the very last line where it has my email address. I did change that to be the drainage email address. Which is drainage at right C O to Iowa dot gov. We do have that newly set up, so I've got that on there. This notice would be published in the newspaper for two weeks. We get it sent out this week, then we can get it in the next couple of weeks here. I'll also post it up onto the website. And then I will also mail out letters to known contractors. I sent a. Contact email to the administrators around the area to see who they currently use, who they previously used, or anyone they know of of brush and weed control contractors. And the only responses that I received are. Joey Hera, who we previously use. B and W Control Specialist, which is formerly Long Manicura out of Algonah. We previously used them. I believe Webster County is currently using them. They have no issues with them. I think the understanding is that the son is now taking it over for the father. And then a new one is B and L Seating out of Dumont. That is who Franklin County just went with. They just went through their contract process and bidding. And they had one bid and it was from this B and L Seating and said they were awarded it. Looking at dates for this. If this is approved. We can put it out into the paper this week. And get that sent off and then we can potentially look at having bids due by March eighth. If you want to do like three o'clock or whatever time, they would have to be due to the auditor's office. And then potentially looking at the bids being opened on March eleventh.
Okay.
And then they could start doing work on April one, which is when the contract would start.
I only have one question on. On part, section two, part D. Brush and weeds, what, you know, willows can grow five, six feet. Is it a six foot willow still brushers, a tree, or what constitutes a tree versus brush? Is that's going to be, I mean, is it caliper size or is it height? But I know that's going to be a question they're going to have.
We haven't had any of the county drainage administrators really go into detail on how they do the trees. So I think that would be something that you guys would want to.
Any, any of that, Rick?
Sumac I would consider to be brush.
And we can also include a list, you know, Sumac oak.
Most. Mulberry I would consider to be brush. However, I mean, you get to a mulberry that's. I don't know. Eight inches across.
Kind of got a tree then.
You almost have a tree.
So, and even some of the willows, I mean, you may have a patch of willows.
I would consider that brush to up to a certain. But I don't know that we want to get into, you know. I mean, these. The contractors have been. Working in this area and sure to be familiar with. What is considered brush and what is considered trees, I think.
It it just says, and that's what, I thank you, Courtney, for doing all the work on this. This has been great and, but it says trees will be handled separately from the contract. Sometimes what I've seen is where the old, the contractor will go through and he'll spray it and it'll kill half of the tree. The spray hits the one half, doesn't. Doesn't get the other half. So two years later, you come back, this tree is now.
A tree.
A a tree, but what constitute a tree? Is it a two inch, three inch?
I think you're going to almost have to need, that's going to have to be specified, Dean, because you're already out there and bid that and it's, it's going to be hard to. What do you think, Rick? It's your, that's your line of work?
Well, everybody knows what a shrub is, usually six to eight feet tall, bushed out to the bottom. As as far as trees, I would constitute a tree being a two inch diameter. Two or three feet above the ground with no. Brush stuff down below. That'd be my opinion. Between the bushes or between a shrub and a tree. I would say up to a two inch diameter would be considered a tree.
Di- diameter or caliper?
Uh, caliper.
Rick and and Eric, would you guys? Deal with brush control on. Your properties or the properties that you're responsible for and the right away, would you? Say that that's a. Accurate description or would you define it?
Yeah, it is an accurate description. For the state of Iowa, for the forestry. I think it's three quarter inch diameter to constitute a tree. Or forest reserve.
Okay.
Tree is a shrub until it gets, I mean. The shrub isn't going to be a tree. It could be a tree if you turned it up, but.
Yeah.
So do, does the forestry, do they have like? A guideline at all? They don't?
Just has. Two hundred, two hundred trees per acre.
Okay.
Of three quarter inch diameter or greater.
I just think if we go out to bid, these people are bidding it, they're looking at things, we should have a reference what, where that line goes from a tree to a shrub, a shrub, because it's going to be. It's going to create questions. They're going to be doubt, I mean. You, you like just a two inch caliper, Rick? You think? That's pretty good.
Two inch caliper would constitute a tree.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so we just change that then? I just want clarity down the road. I mean, I can see they're out there bidding these things and they're going to question, well, is that a tree or a shrub? Looks good, Courtney.
Yeah.
So you're looking for approval as amended, I mean, with the. With the changes that we've discussed here.
Correct.
That would make, I would make a motion.
I would second.
Okay, so first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
And then, and then would you like a separate motion on? Having it. As soon as possible with bid race. Bids need to be received by the eighth of March at three P M. And bid opening on the eleventh of March.
Correct. And then if you want to set the time on the eleventh.
Close the business or three o'clock, so it's not like.
No, no, on the eleventh, it would be during our meeting.
Open the bids.
It's open.
Nine thirty, sure.
So so moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we get the final out and get it advertised and.
Yeah, once I make those changes, I'll get it to you for you. To review once more, just to make sure that we got everything in there and that all.
And exhibit A will become part of this stocking, correct? Okay.
It will not go out in the publication, but it will be up onto the website.
When they, what the contractors look at, it will include that.
Yeah, what goes in the newspaper will just be.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, any else before the board? No, I will take a motion to adjourn. We're back.
Second, Rick, will you be zooming in on the conference board?
At four o'clock, yes.
Okay, very good.
Sounds good.
Motion to adjourn.
A second, okay. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, Rick. We'll see you at four.
You're back, bye.